Would you please have a roll call, Mr.?
Commissioner Sorensen. Commissioner Oliveras.
Here.
Commissioner Jay.
Here.
Commissioner Chappell.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Collin. Commissioner.
Here. Well. Thank you. Everybody have a chance to review the minutes from December second, twenty twenty four meeting.
Yes, sir.
Any changes to note? If none, all entertain a motion to approve.
So.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. The minutes pass. Visitors. Good evening. Do we have any other comments?
We can start on the attendant later in the evening.
Okay. Then I will go ahead and move on to new business. This evening, the planning commission will hold a public hearing.
So since they're here for seven point two, can we move seven point two before seven point one?
Sure.
That would be the ideal.
Well, let us move to seven point two right now for site design review, approval extension request. S T R twenty twenty three. Make it a season L L C. Staff report, please, Brad.
Perfect. So I told you that I moved you up to the agenda and I lied apparently. Had you in the middle. So anyway. So you'll. You'll remember. Way back in two thousand twenty three, the. You folks approved the the project for Western Interlock, the the project of the Striker Road and Hoffman Road. The site is twenty seven point two four acres in size. It's at the heavy industrial zone. These folks right here. With like an extension of that approval for an additional year. You'll remember that you approved that with nineteen conditions of approval on April third, two thousand twenty three. They're seeking yet one more year. Of their approval. I went ahead and looked at the criteria that you folks had the code. To evaluate extension requests and my assessment is it's completely against those criteria. I would recommend approval of this based on all of that. Are there any questions?
We all. I think we all understand about interest rates.
I do have a question. Is one year our standard? I'm sorry.
It is. And one year is the standard. Yeah, they can extend it for an additional year. In the future, but they have provided information to to explain how they believe they'll be able to get it done. Or at least started with it next year.
Right. Do the commissioners have questions of the applicants? Then entertain a motion. Or do we need to do a motion? I think.
Again. There is a suggested motion in the packet on page fifteen. Oh, wait. It's somewhat of a. Recommended motion. I move to vote on the site design review for approval extension request S T R twenty twenty three, Paying Industries LLC.
Second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passed. I just symbol. Good luck.
Thanks. Good to see you.
All right, then we'll move back up to seven point one. This evening, the planning commission will hold a public hearing on legislative amendment L A twenty twenty five dash zero one. To discuss a small change to the Independence Development Code. Providing fencing standards, the planning commission will make the recommendation to the city council based on the complete record. Including the testimony received following tonight's public hearing. These proceeds will be recorded. Proceedals will be recorded. This hearing will be held in accordance with the land use procedures required by the city and the state of Oregon. This is a type of legislative procedure. At the beginning of the public hearing, tonight's staff will identify the applicable substantive criteria from the city's comprehensive plan. And for state of Oregon statewide planning goals. For anyone who wish you to speak, we're asking you to use speaker cards that are provided. All upon the speech, you must be recognized by the chair and you must state your name and address for the public record. Obviously, we have no visitors to speak. Before we begin, does any commissioner wish to declare actual potential conflict of interest in this matter? Won't see any. I will go ahead now. Hearing, public hearing, L A twenty twenty five dash zero one. Staff report, please, Brad.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So you folks looked at this at your last meeting. You'll remember two meetings ago, we had an individual come in and request our chain link fence standards to be more flexible. The code as it's written would allow chain link on similar portions of the lot. When there's chain link on the same block and I included additional language or cul-de-sac just to make it. Clear because. Cul-de-sacs are kind of a neat thing. So I went ahead and threw that in there. So long as fifty percent of the properties on that block or the cul-de-sac had chain link. So if you're predominantly have chain link around, you can use chain link the same portion of the lot as the other chain link. I went ahead and took a look at this in terms of our Oregon State Planning Goals, really. The Oregon State Planning Goals don't delve into things like fence standards, you know. So that's generally consistent. Even our 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 comprehensive plan. Goals and whatnot, it just talks about maintaining the character of the existing community. That's what this is intending to do is trying to maintain fencing standards where. The existing fencing standards that we have, but allow a little more flexibility where. Historically, chain link fences have been used. Based on all of that sort of stuff and my analysis of Independence Development Code, I would recommend. Approval of this change, it's been through all the applicable notice that's required for something like this. And as such, and we haven't heard anything. So I said, I would.
Any questions? Commissioner Fred? I had one to be questioned. The one that came in and talked about those standards. Yeah. She's talking about her backyard.
She was talking, she was talking about.
She's talking about front yard or back?
Side yard and front, front yard. So it would at least get her the side yard. In this situation, I can't, I don't. I don't believe there's.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should modify code just for that, obviously, the month these.
I don't.
Just want to curious.
Yeah.
Since she was the.
Yeah.
The amicus.
Yeah.
It would be no one else shame to pass the code that didn't actually help her.
Yeah, I mean, so I mean, part of the issue was she had bought the fence already.
Yeah.
She's like. I want to use this fence that I bought.
Yeah.
And so this would at least allow her to do fencing on. The site of her property if there's. Chain link in the front of.
Of her neighbors.
Of. Any of her neighbors, basically, that she could, then she could. Do that in the front as well.
Okay, that's what I just.
Yeah.
Like I said, I was eight for.
Yeah.
For a week, for two months.
It's a great, it's a great point because what she could do is she could come down with the chain link on the side and then she could bop it out toward the front facade of it. But then it would be not in front of it, but it would still be the side, but it would be the side. Right? Exactly. And and I do know that there's chain links out there doing that.
Okay. That was just must think personal curiosity, but it just seems appropriate since.
Yeah. Yes.
And so the the standard of no chain fences is operating on the the historic preservation history code? Are there?
Yeah, so right. So this would be more flexible than our current code. So currently, if somebody comes in. And ask for chain link unless they already have chain link fencing their portion of the lot, they're just like, we want to replace the chain link that we have, then we're like, okay. They have. If they're trying to put new chain link or chain link doesn't exist, we say, no, that's not allowed. So so. This code would not allow chain link in the historic district period. Yeah, explicitly. But right now, no chain link is allowed in the historic district.
It's almost redundant. Right. So the state has maybe got grandfathered in. So when we're talking about chain link. You know, we're talking like chain link that's around softball or baseball field or the new stuff they have out now where they have to put slats or vinyl slats. Was there any specification?
We didn't, we didn't specify, we didn't specify. Any sort of screening inside of that, inside of that. As part of this.
Farther down in. Though the standards for material is not valid. Hang wire.
Yeah, well, and I mean, you know. It's hog wire fences got kind of trendy there for a while. Like I, I came from when my first job was up on Whitby Island. Hog wire fences were super popular out there, like. And people. Made them look real nice and all that sort of stuff. So coming down here and saying, no, no hog wire. It's like, oh, that's, that's interesting, you know? Because I tend to think a hog wire fence close even a little better than a chain fence, if you do it right.
I do, Frank. Yeah, because I'm thinking. For my parents, it was a balance between high street. Being herds of deer walking down the street there. And the Georgia public. That people had their hood to protect their gardens, they have gardens on the front building, like chain fence here on those keep the deer out. So I don't know if we have that situations here.
And they have to be higher than three and a half feet, which is what this says in front.
There's some bad.
We're gonna have feet up. Right up.
Jump right over. Sorry, here all the time. Yeah, I seen them on Seven Street and then watch down back through the garden too. All right, any other questions? There is no objection. I will now close the record and. You have a sample. Motion, this one.
I move forward a recommendation of approval on the revised fencing standard, L A twenty twenty five dash one to the independent city council.
And all those in favor? Oh, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion passed. Correct. Moving right along to seven point three, a discussion of limited land use decisions. Draft codes.
You guys are moving really quick tonight. All right, so for this, you'll remember that Senate Bill, House Bill, one of the bills. Senate Bill fifteen thirty, thirty seven, Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven. Was the housing omnibus bill, right? And there was a whole bunch of stuff. That's where we got the housing adjustments, standards and everything. And in the process of reading that. I completely, I completely missed this whole limited land use decision section and. It was sort of after the fact and you folks had heard about this. That basically what the state is trying to do here is remove things that typically have planning commissioner. A approval processes from planning commission. And you'll see how they did it. It's. You know, like you look at this section, if you look at page twenty one and then saw this. It's existing standards and everything like that, existing standards, you know, I saw the fold right here. Approval or denial of application for a replat. Okay, you know, that's what I thought that they were adding, but then. Way down on page twenty five, that number six. A city shall apply the procedures in this section and only the procedures in this section to a limited land use decision, even if the city has not incorporated them in land use decisions. Into land use regulations. And so it's. All right, I think that's it. Anyway, there is something down here somewhere where it's like. And all this applies to only the, you can only use this process for these land use types anymore. And so we have to, we have to. Do something to address this. Now, what the state has said is, oh, oh, you don't need to actually. Adopt this into your code because there's an expiration date. You can see section forty seven. Section forty six of this two thousand twenty four act is repealed on January second, twenty thirty two. But you'll see that it says section forty six is the one right above it, which relates to. To when you can request an exit, a hardship exemption. So they're revealing the hardship exemption section. They're not revealing anything else. So what my. Assessment of all this is, is. This, these limited land use decisions are going to be the law of the land, I would say, for the foreseeable future. I don't think these are going to expire anytime. This is. This is sort of how. It's going to go down from. From here on. So based on that, my recommendation is that we take a look at subchapter eleven of our development code and ultimately, yeah. The entirety of our development code. And when I say that, there's just a whole bunch of things that are kind of, kind of. Going to have to get shifted around to reflect this. Within, within to help. To help achieve this. So what you'll see before you, and I should have just given you a clean copy too, because that would make it easier to see. I apologize for that. I had the thought and then, you know what? I didn't do it. So essentially, how essentially this thing would work is you'll see right there on page twenty seven. I would, I would suggest that we include the type of the limited land use decisions under the type one action. And I specifically don't integrate them into the rest of the type one decisions. Just in case we can somehow take them out of there in the future and put it back into the type two process. Because ideally, I think things like, especially big subdivisions. Should probably be reviewed in a public hearing process. Like, I mean. Ideally, that makes sense. But for the time being, I figure let's put them in the type one process. Let's put them in a place where we could remove them. If we have, if we can in the future. Based on that, then everything sort of gets shifted around just a little bit. So everything that was the type one, that's now a type one limited land use decision I put in there. Then everything that's a type two, that's a limited land use decision, I put in there as well. So that's why you see subdivisions, minor and major partitions, subdivisions or partitioned replats. Line adjustments. Nonconforming use, extensions, say the center view, et cetera. After having done that, I think this actually gives us a chance to go into this. Code, which and just clean up some stuff. And then the rest of it is just basically trying to clean up and make the process easier to sort of. Flow through. So for every app, so I, what I tried to do is as you imagine the land use process, you're coming in for application. Okay, perfect. Eleven dot oh oh five on page twenty nine says the sort of stuff that we're looking for in an application. And it applies to all of the applications, right? You'll see on page thirty, I then included a land, a table to sort of summarize. The various approval processes and how they work, who's getting noticed, when. All that sort of stuff to try and make it just a little. A little clear with all, with all of the, with all of that stuff. For. Going on, there's a whole bunch of cross through, but this, this section here, what I did was I pulled out the various portions of this section and I just tried to consolidate them. Like ideas because our type one decision and our type two decision were basically saying the same thing. I just put them in one place. Then I tried to simplify the order as we're going through it. So it's easier to see. So so for a completeness review of the application. You see on page, starting on page thirty seven, it says what? How we review an application for completeness. Again, that information is in the type one process, the type two process. So I just tried to consolidate it. Then eleven. Oh, two, five on page thirty eight really starts talking about who we send notices to. There's a couple of just. Things about we send it to Department of Transportation for certain activities. And another part of the code essentially we sent, we sent it to the Oregon Department of Aviation for certain types of activities and just trying to put them in the same spot. Then on page forty, the contents of what that notice will essentially say. Again, this is. Grouped, there's a provision that we have in there about what happens if no notice is received. That's still in there. Basically, I didn't. Get rid of anything. I just sort of. Shifted stuff around and I put it in a way that it made more sense to me because there's always things where it's like. In our existing code, you go through and you're like, okay, I'm, I'm doing a public hearing. You'll go through, you'll get to the public hearing part and we'll say type one, then you got to scroll down further and you get to the type two part. It's like, no, why don't we just put all of that? Stuff in the same place or maybe. That may not be good. It's, it's something like that. So anyway, then just talking about. Making the information available when we send out the notice. So essentially, when we send out the notice, we have the information available for the public to review. To then talking about staff reports, conditions of approval. And then any sort of hearing process on page seventeen really talking about the hearing process. The hearing rules. And then if an appeal happens. How the appeal. Works. And then, of course, the timeframes for approval, which is what. Which, which is the hundred and twenty day rule and all that sort of stuff for certain types of activities. So basically, what I tried to do is. Make the. Process. I tried to lay out the process in a way that was more linear. So. It was easier. Most mostly for me to follow. What's it?
You're gonna be on the works, so maybe it's only making easier for you to follow.
And yeah, I mean, I always feel like there's stuff in random places where it's like, oh, shoot, you know, I didn't. See that or I didn't realize that. So that's what, what this is trying to do where it's like, okay. You know, we have a, we have a public hearing. How do we run the public hearing? Okay, we go to the public hearing pools. You know, or the public hearing, how a public hearing. And just try and put it. I tried to do it in a linear way that essentially followed then the matrix that I had up here. So you could. You can take this matrix, sort of go through and say, okay, and you can sort of correspond it to later, then see, okay, this is how that works. So in short, this is. Sort of the idea of. My, my idea of how I think we can do this. I do think it's an opportunity for us to clean up the subchapter eleven. Which I think is a good thing. But of course, this is not the only part of this change because in doing this, we're going to have to go into the variance section. And the. And. Because in doing this, we're gonna have to go into the variance section and the, and various portions of the code. And. And make them refer to this and remove that from the type two hearing process, which is before the codes. And so. This is essentially part one. If this looks generally fine to you, I'll probably send it to our attorney to say. Does this still look fine, like it says, it says, I didn't do anything really stupid, right? And, and they'll look at that, and then at your next, at your next meeting. It will be those related changes that we can go through, um, little by little. And we can see those, just how those work. What I will say is, in, in looking at that, I think. I think we can use some sort of. My idea is that if it ever gets, if we can ever get rid of the limited land use decision. Having to come to me, and it can come back to you folks, we want to do that in the future. My idea is to write it in such a way where the only change we have to make then at that point is just switching the time. Switching it from the type one process to the type two process, and then everything works still in the code. So I want to use a term like review authority, the review authority for this. Application. Processes in accordance with subchapter eleven. And then if we can do it that way, then we can just make the change, refer to it chapter, subchapter eleven. We don't have to go through this whole way to roll and went back. That, that's, that's what I'm hoping, um, that's sort of what I'm shooting for, so.
So the last twelve months, yeah, we have, like, in Michigan, every month, yeah, so. We, we had whatever work we've done. How much of the, the last twelve months have we not, we did this year, you understand what I'm trying to get at? I mean, we had a hundred percent of work to do last year, so with this, switching it, that you're having to deal with it. Like thirty percent, fifty percent, seventy percent of the work we did last year would not been undone as planning commission.
So your guys this year and my year last year was really weird, because we did a whole bunch of legislative stuff. We got, essentially, we were doing, uh, essentially three grants that we got funded from this state. So the downtown parking project, the central college plan, housing production strategy. You folks contributed a whole bunch to all of those things. Those were. Those took a ton of time, your time, yeah, so. Next year, we won't have that same thing, uh, we won't, but you will.
Well, the big pro- the big projects still gonna be. Where, well, should be, most of engaged with big projects, the lots of them, but not, well, I talked about later, you know.
Yeah, you guys are gonna be involved with the legislative, the legislative stuff. So things like, uh, um, we have an infill housing code, and I mean, that, from my perspective. Working with consultants is mad because the project goes quick. You know, like, the budget goes quick and all that sort of stuff, like, and you just feel like, I should have gotten more out of this, like. It's oppressive, it's, for me, it's frustrating. So what I want to try and do with this infill housing code is I want to front load a whole bunch of the work. So we can then hand it to them, say, this is where we want to go with this project, to hopefully get further along. With, with, with the effort, so I'm trying to lay some of the groundwork for that project. Even next month, I hope is, we can start, and even the video for tonight. Is, is, is talking about middle housing and just, um, just, it's a very good video. But I think we can start talking about exactly what we want, so we can really push them along. In the project going forward. So I will say, yeah, some of the stuff that you have done traditionally, like things like the Western Interlock Project, the Brandyman subdivision. Those will not come, come to you as part of this anymore, which is, which seems to me is kind of weird. That's, that's all, all there is, you know, yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna come to me and.
So when, when there's a whole group of people that don't want something to happen, are they gonna get to your office, have that kind of?
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna do the exact same notice process, all of that sort of stuff. But there is no, there's, there's no public hearing unless it is appealed. Unless it is appealed, and I mean, don't, don't, I, I mean, don't fret, you guys will get the appeals. At least as it's written right now, I think, right? Uh, type one appeals comes to the planning commission. So you might still get your, your hearing.
Oh, I see what you're, I know what you're gonna do, deny, 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 that's what will happen, then it will just have to come here.
Like saying the bug's gonna stop with us, right?
Far forget, is there assistance city by opposition within the city of independence by the chance?
No, there's not, uh, there should be. We, we do have an intern for, for this year, which is, which is very, it's, so that person can help you. So you're, what, what, she, she, yeah, she went through and she pulled all of the associated code changes. From the code that we're gonna be able to make as a result. She's been doing, she's been doing a ton of GI, uh, GI, uh, geographic information system work for me.
Is she still on the job as of early today? That's good, good to know, this is amazing.
Yeah, it's funny, we sent a little letter to the state, because you folks are gonna keep on processing subdivision applications and all that stuff until June. This went into effect January, but we requested it in next schedule. We thought that that made good sense to at least request it until June. In the process of writing that letter, we said, we estimate that this will cost city time at least eighty or a hundred hours. And like, we so underestimated that, like, this, this just, it's a pain, it's a pain in the butt. To search through like three hundred pages of codes and try and find all of the, all of the random. References and stuff like that.
But I should think we're making it easier, not just for you, but for anybody trying to make an application. It is more simplified and linear, like you're talking about.
That's, that's what, that is always the hope, is, you know, I always, I, I figured that simple for me is simple for everybody.
This, this is more of a common, very non-question. I know this was prior to the governor, so it may not have been. May not help if we had some local city lobbying, but I just wonder how many other cities have stuck up on us.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, literally, the guidance from the state says, and this is written on a DLCD guidance. For implementing Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven, it says, don't worry about putting this in your code, it's going to expire. And you can look, and it's, no, it doesn't expire. They're gonna interpret it wrong to you, so.
And you have that in council, that's not what it stands for.
Yeah, exactly.
So does anything today require a vote, or is it just bringing this for the first time?
This is bringing it to you for the first time, if it looks good, like they say, I'm gonna send it to your attorney.
Yeah, I, I, how you condensed six pages into six paragraphs, I just, that just seemed like common sense, it is possible. Because it was so dense and so heavy and you cannot, into a very readable piece of material that's clear and precise. So I just want to say thank you to you for the work you put in on that.
Oh, yeah, no problem, I figured this is about, I mean, this is worth the price of admission. I, I mean, stuff like this, I just, I look at this, I'm like, oh, okay. You know, I, I can understand this, you know, stuff like this is always what we're going for.
Are there any, or can I ask? Are there any? Timelines that are supposed to live in that state, I know we have our thirty day, none of the times changed in your table, like thirty day response or thirty days of response.
No.
But they, they haven't mandated. Yeah, I guess you have to make your time adjustments.
The adjustments, right, so the state hasn't changed their timelines. So it's still the hundred and twenty day rule. Basically, a whole bunch of that stuff, from my understanding, stays in place. And so that's why, uh, it still maintains a lot of that stuff. Yeah.
Okay. I, I've read her again, but I can never see it, yeah, thank you. Okay, so then you'll go ahead and give this information to the city attorney and he'll verify it, he or she.
Yeah.
Or then he will verify it and see, good job, and then we'll move on to the next step.
Yeah, very. And then, then, yeah, it's, it's about, it's about twenty pages of materials. Going with the rest, so. I've, I've started that, uh, just a great part.
Oh, any questions?
So we do have a video for tonight.
Right, I've been looking forward to it.
I, 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 for some reason, I really like this guy out of Canada. And I think he does a really good job with this one, so, uh, so, yeah.
Yeah, are you ready?
S. S.